Good evening. I am running the show tonight, so I am calling to order this Borough Council Workshop Meeting of September 3rd, 2025. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, so first thing this evening, we have citizens to be heard. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment? Stephanie, anyone online?
No.
Okay. And moving forward, we will entertain a motion for approving our meeting minutes for July 2nd, 2025, for our workshop meeting minutes.
I move that Borough Council approve the July 2nd, 2025 workshop meeting minutes.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Should I wait on? Okay, let's pause this a moment. Can I, can I just pause that action? Okay, I need another action to allow Counselor Rus to attend by Zoom.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion passes. Welcome, Counselor Rus.
Thank you so much. I apologize for being late. I was dealing with a family situation that's a bit challenging, so thank you for allowing me to attend by Zoom.
Absolutely. Thanks for attending and we'll try not to keep you too long. Okay, we have our meeting minutes, action item, motion and seconded. Any comments? All right, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the motion passes. All right. Moving on, we have Budget and Finance, and we are going to have a six-month financial review staff update from Jason Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor and members of council. Yeah, so we've got a snapshot in time for you as of June 30th, the end of the second quarter. It'd be a high-level overview of all the borough's major operating funds. And we'll touch on some of the highlights with respective variances as far as revenue and expenses. So generally speaking, the general fund is largely in line with expectations. With respect to expenses, Supply Services and Utilities are down about 25% when compared to 2024. But that is due to a one-time transfer to the capital fund in January of 2024, so those figures are a bit skewed when compared year over year. Our debt service payments are down 31% when compared to 24, and that is to be anticipated as we pay that debt down. With respect to revenue categories, real property taxes are up about 3%, and that is as a result of our collection of above-average real estate transfer tax revenue so far this year. Our other local taxes are up about 33% as a result, largely an additional remittance of current and prior-year earned income tax and current-year local services tax during the first half of this year as compared to the first half of last year. Our revenues from licenses and permits are up about 82% year-to-date, and that is primarily due to an increase in building and related permits as well as street occupancy permits. Charges for services are up 129% due primarily to the sale of the 2008 Sutton Fire Apparatus, but also as a result of early receipt of our annual health insurance rebate. Interest and rents are up about 22%, largely because of an increased cash, average cash balance in the general fund. And intergovernmental revenues are down 73% when compared to last year, but that is directly related to the receipt of a one-time grant in 2024. Next, we'll move on to the borough's enterprise funds. First, we have a year-over-year comparison of utility billing arrears. So while we continue to work to offer reasonable payment arrangements as well as doing our best to make our residents aware of any financial assistance programs that are available, the number of payable accounts remains relatively consistent with the past two years. However, the outstanding amount is slightly larger, and that is likely due to increases in utility rates. With respect to the water fund, our salaries, wages, and benefits are up 32% when compared to 2024, but that is expected and as budgeted. Budget adjustments were made in 2025 to account for new positions as well as to allocate budget funding to match the type of work performed so that the individuals in that fund who are performing the work are getting paid out of that fund respectively. Additionally, we do have above-expected levels of year-to-date water distribution overtime due to above-average after-hours repair incidents. Our capital expenditures are up significantly, 415%, but that is due to approved and budgeted capital projects, including laboratory, cabinetry, and flooring replacements, the water system rehabilitation projects, transmission line replacements, and the PFOS monitoring pilot project at the water treatment plant. Transfers out are down because we have not yet completed the budgeted transfers for the year, but they will come up during the next quarter and even out. With respect to the water fund revenues, everything is tracking along very nicely, and there is nothing of note. For the sewer fund, just as in the water fund, salaries, wages, and benefits are up, and that is again by design to account for new positions and allocate budgeting to match the type of work performed as well as the fact that year-to-date sewer collection overtime is above expected levels, as is the case with water. Transfers out are down again because we've yet to complete those this year. Your debt service is down by about 11%, which is anticipated as the debt is paid down. And capital expenditures are up significantly, but that is due to multiple budgeted projects in 2025, and they include sewer system rehabilitation projects, pump station upgrades, a new vehicle, and filter feed pump replacements. With respect to revenues for the sewer fund, charges for services are down 11% year-over-year, but that is primarily due to a delay in receiving the billing revenue from our neighboring townships. But we are also seeing a decrease in tapping fee applications and the revenue from them. Other revenues are also up 29%, and that is due to increased pretreatment sampling fees as well as early receipt of the borough's annual health insurance rebate checks. With respect to the stormwater fund, Supply Services and Utilities are down year-over-year, and that is largely a result of the extra community outreach and spot infrastructure repairs that were performed in 2024 by comparison. Capital expenditures are up significantly, but that is a direct result of the previously approved purchase of the leaf vacuum truck this year for which approximately $200,000 out of the $255,000 price tag was paid for with a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. With respect to revenues, charges for services are up 15%, but that is due to an additional billing posting in the first quarter of '25 as compared to '24. And other revenue is up as a result, again, of the early receipt of our annual health insurance rebate check. For the solid waste fund, as you recall, primarily in 2023, the fund was intended to only reflect activities pertaining to collecting and turning over trash and recycling collection fees to the contracted provider. With respect to expenditures, salaries, wages, and benefits are down compared to last year because the compost center payroll has been entirely moved over to the general fund in 2025. Supply Services and Utilities are down about 46%, and that is only because our 2025 second-quarter billing was not paid to the vendor until July, so it's not reflected in this report as of the end of the second quarter. With respect to revenues, charges for services are up 20% due to the rate increase for the contracted service. Licenses and permits are up 24% as a result of increased compost site permit sales. Lastly, intergovernmental revenue is down when compared to '24 because the borough received its delayed 2021 recycling performance grant in the first half of '24, which then skews the numbers going forward. Typically, we would receive one grant each year, but there was a delay in the distribution from Commonwealth for the 2021 grant, so we essentially posted revenue for two grants in 2024. As for expenses in the parking fund, Supply Services and Utilities are up 28%, and that is due to our purchasing of additional enforcement equipment, the outreach campaign that consisted of printing informational kiosk brochures as well as substantial maintenance expenses to the Pomper Street parking garage gate system. Salaries, wages, and benefits are also up about 27%, and that is directly related to our increased enforcement initiatives. Transfers out are down when compared to '24, again, because we've not yet completed those for the year. Debt service is down, which is also anticipated as the debt is paid down. And capital expenditures are down substantially, but that is because in 2024, the borough opted to purchase and install the parking kiosks, which totaled about $450,000. Revenues for the parking fund, our charges for services, fines, and forfeits do appear to be down, but that is because we are actually behind in our housekeeping with respect to posting that revenue from mobile and application payments. But at first glance, everything does seem to be in line with prior-year performance after we get that posted. Intergovernmental revenue is down 100% compared to last year, but that is because we did receive the Driving PA Forward Grant in 2024. And other revenue is up significantly year-over-year, again, due to our early receipt of the borough's health insurance rebate checks. And then lastly, what we have for you is a summary of performance through the second quarter for all of the borough's major funds as compared to budget.
Thank you so much for that update. Does council have any questions, comments? And I just wanted to just remind folks, in case you didn't know, we didn't use to get these updates like we do now. We used to only get our budget session in November, and this is actually a benefit to the community to be able to check in on our expenses, our revenues, how everything's running. And that way, they can ask questions rather than only having that opportunity to sit through a very long budget meeting, which is also open to the public and will be at the end of the year. But we really appreciate these quarterly updates so we can be on the right track. Thank you. And moving on, we have ERCP.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I have one item. I move that council appoint Jim Sutter as Assistant Zoning Officer for an indefinite term beginning September 3rd, 2025.
We have a motion to appoint Jim Sutter for our Assistant Zoning Officer. Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. And moving on, we have Sustainable Community and Economic Planning.
Thank you, Miss Deputy Mayor. We have two items on, there are two items on my agenda for tonight. The first is a land use reform update from Jared Wolston, Director of Sustainability, Sustainable Community and Economic Development.
I do have a presentation tonight. It's pretty short, and I'll leave time for questions, comments. So these are the topics that I wanted to brief council on tonight. I think the last time I was before you was in April, to give any substantive kind of update. And since then, council's approved some zoning changes, so these are the things that are in the hopper. Let's advance the next slide. So we've been, over the last year, doing an analysis of, you know, historic land use conditions in different neighborhoods. Some of the older neighborhoods in the borough used to have small corner stores, studios, service businesses, even mechanic shops, things like that. And I think you've heard me say in the past that some of those places have been zoned residential, making it quite difficult to do that, you know, non-residential use by right. The comprehensive plan for places like the R4 district, where we focus a lot of our attention, indicates, you know, most land use activities that want to change a use from a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use need to go before the zoning hearing board for a discretionary review. Again, not permitted by right, which would allow staff to issue a permit for things that are laid out in the code as, you know, allowed by right. So there's an additional cost, an additional burden when you add cost to a project that sort of reduces the likelihood that it'll happen, particularly small-scale projects with already thin margins. So we've looked at those historic patterns of land use as well as physical conditions. I think I've shown council in the past that a lot of the places in these old neighborhoods fail to meet our dimensional requirements, so they exceed setbacks and lock coverage and things like that. And this is prevalent in a lot of those places. This is primarily due to sort of requiring these traditional neighborhoods to meet more conventional suburban codes that really don't follow the land use pattern. So the anticipated recommendations would probably be to allow some flexibility in terms of the dimensions. So existing established neighborhoods, if, you know, someone wants to do a building addition for whatever reason, if it conforms to the neighborhood condition, the code ought to allow that to happen. So we'd be adding some flexibility, particularly along, you know, front setbacks as well as minimum lock dimensions for, you know, creating new dwelling units. We've bumped into this a few times in my short tenure, where, you know, a garden apartment or, you know, some small-scale duplex or three-unit place that's quite like others in the neighborhood would have to go through zoning hearing board to get, you know, a whole bunch of variances to do again what's been done. But there are some reasons to hesitate. One is sort of the today's consumer, today's buyer that's purchased a home in these neighborhoods probably anticipates the land use pattern to stay pretty similar to what it is. So if they have existing apartments, they have existing homes, it could be jarring to see new businesses pop up. So what we're focusing on here is to make sure that we're thoughtful about scaling those businesses for a neighborhood. So I wrote in the list, and I apologize, it's hard to, you know, again, with regard to scale. It's kind of hard to scale the text of these monitors, so I apologize. But, you know, planners tend to use these benchmark numbers, 2,500 square feet, 5,000 square feet, those types of numbers for neighborhood context, particularly when we don't have design guidelines or, you know, coding that allows a more specific attention to scale and design. For the existing zoning ordinance, the code already provides for a 2,500-square-foot neighborhood convenience store. But we've seen this applied in some ways, you know, different than probably what people expect it would be. A neighborhood retail store can allow lots of different things. What we're usually seeing come through the door is kind of your neighborhood smoke shop, where it's like selling vapes and cigarettes and things like that. You know, that's fine, but it doesn't get you the grocery items and the things that you need in your neighborhood just to kind of keep things going and reduce your vehicle trips to the big grocery store. So one possible text amendment to that, you know, neighborhood convenience store, is to make it retail, that's primarily grocery items, and may offer takeout food items. I think it kind of gets back to what a neighborhood store is in your mind, what you actually see, which is, you know, what I already described. So again, we'll try to scale this to neighborhood context. We'll maybe do some small changes to the text so that the retail uses that come along are things that you actually want in your neighborhood. And we might try to do this analysis for other places, not just R2, which is medium density, and R4. We might also look at R5, traditional residential. This is sort of a weird district. I know any scientist would say this. I'm a planner, so I can say weird. The R5 district has mostly established neighborhoods in it, but it's got dimensional problems galore. It's got a lot of outbuildings in the rear, you know, small garages and sheds that exceed the rear setback. It's got restaurants in a residential district that aren't allowed by rights. You have to go through knotholes and jump through hoops to get a sign. You know, and these are places that front along corridors with other commercial uses, and they're zoned residential. So we might take a peek at R5 while we're looking at R2 and R4. And then the other things that I sort of mentioned in here. In terms of an appropriate location, again, if you're scaling this for walkability, where Carlisle already has, you know, pretty well-connected sidewalks and curb parking in most neighborhoods, parking should be less of a stressor, but in some neighborhoods, I'm sure neighbors would come out and they'd tell me it's a real problem. So it really is kind of case-specific, so we want to be thoughtful about where this is allowed, if it does get allowed in some of these residential places that formerly had commercial uses. One thought is to do it along arterials and collectors, which naturally have higher trips. There are roads that are designed for moving more vehicles, and then corner stores with double frontage, so you have more opportunity along a private property to park. We've also talked about accessory uses on other local streets. So if it's an owner-occupied place, maybe it's an accessory business that you offer. We've had some high-level conversations about allowing this on alleys. For alleys, accessibility really becomes a bit of a challenge, particularly for, you know, fire trucks and things like that. But you still do see some small-scale businesses in the downtown along alleys. So this is very much guided by some of the residents that still remember the old businesses. So we're having thoughtful conversations with them, and we're mapping out their observations from when they were kids or when they were growing up. And we're observing things like the changes that have happened over time that seem to be induced by what we've allowed as by-right activities, such as instead of allowing small commercial uses to happen by right, we've allowed apartments. So a lot of these small places have been gobbled up by investors, and they've been turned over as rentals. There's nothing wrong with rentals, but we've encouraged that sort of market to happen by making it sort of difficult to own a place and have a business. Again, collect a little bit of revenue, pay your mortgage. So that's what we're doing with mixed-use neighborhoods. Noise standards. We've had several prompts to look at our noise code. So in the Borough Code, we have two ordinances pertaining to noise. One is the Peace and Good Order Code, and the other is in zoning. The police and the zoning officer are allowed to enforce these, but they have different standards with different thresholds, which adds to some confusion. And then we've got what the state has provided for in the Pennsylvania Alcohol Licensing Preemption, Act 67. The state's basically said through a preemptive code that any establishment that has an alcohol license will not have to follow the local noise regulations for certain times. And I wrote them down, so I'm going to look at my cheat sheet. 75 decibels is their maximum noise level at the property boundary, and that's Sunday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Friday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to midnight. So those prompts that we talked about, you know, one prompt is to try to encourage some vitality. The downtown has, you know, plenty of interesting events that draw people to them. Other places in the borough that have that kind of traditional mixed-use thing happening, maybe they don't have those noise limits that are a little bit higher. For example, in our commercial district, our noise limit is 65 decibels, and it drops down even more for residential. The only place where we have 75 decibels, like what the state allows through preemption, is the industrial district. So in our commercial areas, our mixed-use areas, any restaurant that's got a liquor license can go up to 75 decibels up to the property line by right, and we can't do anything about it. So we were thinking, you know, why does it just have to be for places with a liquor license? Why couldn't it be any place in the borough that we thought the land use activity could appropriately have outdoor music or some kind of event that wouldn't be any higher than what the state allows? And can we consolidate these standards so there's no confusion between zoning and peace and good order? So those are some of the things that we're considering from a land use perspective. Minimum EV parking. This got sort of split between the Climate Action Committee and the Land Use Reform Subcommittee. We started looking at other places that have required minimum electric vehicle parking to encourage, you know, renewable energy systems and reduce local emissions. Our climate action plan that council approved would have us reduce greenhouse gas emissions as much as we can. It's pretty tough to do that without the help of, you know, private property owners. And changing behavior is pretty difficult, so you know, one thought is maybe to change some of the land use codes with regard to parking to require some minimum charging or minimum, you know, readiness, like conduits or space in an electric panel. So one of the codes that we liked was in West Chester, out towards Philly. They've done a pretty good job with their code. They did have some standards for electric vehicle parking that the committee was not comfortable with, and neither was, you know, the staff wasn't either. Standards pertaining to, you know, single-family or two-family homes or requiring EV charging systems to be in a building, and I'll talk about that a little bit. As council knows, we have volunteer fire companies, probably not enough, you know, people to go around with limited budgets. We're also not that sure how to deal with putting out a lithium battery fire. And we have lithium batteries all over the place, but, you know, in the fire department, the fire chief and some of the people that we rely on to put out these fires are concerned about their ability to put out a fire, well, we take that to heart. Some of the standards in the code would have you put EV charging stations in an outdoor parking lot, while our concern for fire goes down. I mean, there's still a safety issue if people get around something that's caught on fire, but it's less detrimental if it's not in a building. Then as far as costs, obviously, a single and two-family home requiring those costs to go into a development and then, you know, go to a future buyer could be challenging for the community. So those are kind of out. So the two standards that we're looking at are pretty close to what we just adopted for minimum bicycle parking. So if you've scaled your project up to a minimum of 10 parking spaces, theoretically, for a new or redevelopment project, you're scaled up enough to put in some EV chargers. If you're doing a smaller-scale project, but it's still a new or redevelopment project, then we want you to be ready for EVs when the market's favorable. So that's what's going on with this. And I can stop anytime you want or just keep rolling. Okay. Industrial uses. Well, let's just hit the paper a bunch. See Maddie in the back, just poised to write something about data centers. I mean, it's got, I think it's got everybody's attention in this region for some, you know, pretty big projects that are happening in Cumberland County. From staff perspective and, again, land use reform, we're sort of wondering what our vulnerability would be in Carlisle. You know, a lot of our land is already occupied. You know, theoretically, if the market wanted to do something here, things could be removed and rebuilt. We've looked at several of the guides that are put out. There actually are some pretty We've looked at several of the guides that are put out, there actually are some pretty good guides. The American Planning Association put something out a few years ago that looked at data centers as potentially a small scale project to a much grander project like the things we're seeing in Northern Virginia and within the region. So they had given some guidance about, you know, ten thousand square foot data centers. And just to be clear, a data center, if if nobody's paying attention, it's it's basically a a big building filled with computers, it's the cloud. They can be noisy, they use a considerable amount of water to cool off those computers. They don't have a lot of staff, you know? So in terms of land use impacts, we're not really that concerned about trips, but some of the nuisance noise and just the scale of these buildings is potentially something to plan for. Uh, again, from staff perspective, we're not sure what our vulnerability is. And we're also not sure that this land use is too different from some of the things that we've already seen in this community. Great big buildings are things that we've seen. But we don't have a land use definition for data centers. So given that potential vulnerability, what would happen? So if the use isn't provided for in the zoning ordinance, the use goes through special exception, it goes through zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board would then have the obligation of considering that land use within within the zoning ordinance. And then theoretically, the use would come before council as a development project. So one thing that we could potentially do is just deal with large scale, medium and large scale industrial uses and not call them data centers and just get ready for whatever the market wants to throw at us next year or the year after. Council approved artisan industry, which was, you'll recall, a ten thousand square foot manufacturing use that could happen in any commercial or industrial district. So what's suggested here is that we scale up from there. We go up to twenty thousand square feet with twenty-five employees. We put that in our light industrial district, our I two district. Now, there are a couple of other industrial districts in the borough, at least that's what the zoning ordinance says. One of them being UM. We don't think this is appropriate in UM, so it's only suggested in I two and I one. I one is kind of your most intense industrial district. And that would allow for more than twenty thousand square feet of industrial building with more than twenty-five employees. We can keep looking through our code to see if we're vulnerable on water use, sewer impacts and noise. I've already briefed you on noise, we have some work to do there, but we do have a maximum of seventy-five decibels at the property line in the industrial district today. And as far as water use, everything in the borough has to connect to a public water supply. So theoretically, we would have to look at our capacity and water and sewer. But still, this could this could come. Accessory dwelling units, I put this slide up here, so you know, the public didn't think we forgot. Accessory dwelling units would be a dwelling that's subordinate to an existing legal dwelling unit. You know, the anticipated recommendation is to put forth some basic dimensional requirements for what comprises this in an ADU. We ended up sort of considering a specific design code for carriage houses, which made things a little bit more complicated. Standards for water and sewer service, so I don't need to be vague about that, but in terms of cost, um, again, every every use in the borough is supposed to be hooked up to water and sewer. We occasionally find places that aren't hooked up to sewer and we make them connect. They have septic systems, don't worry about that, I don't want that to be the quote that everybody hears. Unlicensed discharges everywhere, that's not it. But as far as costs go, if you have a detached building that you'd like to put an ADU, you know, you'd like to renovate it and turn it into a small dwelling, then you have to consider the borough's requirements. So do we make you, you know, put in another water and sewer line and tap into the sewer and water main at a higher cost than just connecting to your existing services? As far as metering goes, connecting to an existing service is of challenge for us. You know, in terms of billing, it makes things more complicated, but it does reduce your costs if you're trying to do this relatively, you know, cheap. So that's something we've looked at. And short-term rentals, again, I'd like to just recommend something for ADUs, but it certainly opens up all sorts of unintended consequences. I have looked at the City of Lancaster's short-term rental code. I think they've done a really good job. And I say that because they've considered their zoning districts in a way that, you know, the market could bring investors that don't really care about neighborhoods. They've made it difficult to buy into those places for a short-term rental and they've made it more appropriate to buy into those places where there are more intense land use activities, commercial uses, hotels, you know, large-scale apartments, that kind of thing. I think Lancaster's done a pretty good job with that and I think it's a decent model. Anyway, it's a it's a work in progress. That's all I got.
Thank you. That was excellent and I sit in on these meetings, so it's it's always refreshing to hear all the work that's been done in a concise manner. Do does council have any questions, comments about what was presented?
I I think it all looks great, you know, really, yeah. What one question I would have regarding ADUs, have we considered commercial accessory dwelling units at all?
So like an owner occupied or an accessory commercial use?
So sort of like, uh, say somebody wanted to convert their garage into a a restaurant or something like that or, you know?
We we've looked at that a little bit with R four, but not specific to like an accessory commercial unit. I I think we may maybe talked talked about that early on in the process, but we didn't actually, you know, put pen to paper for how to do that in Carlisle. Is that something that you'd like considered?
Yeah, I I would be interested in that, yeah.
Okay, and in that and in that, would we be looking at sort of your owner occupied principal residence and and taking a small space for commercial?
Yes, yeah, yeah, and it doesn't have to be, you know, I mean, we can have other considerations of what what can exist and what can't exist in this context, so. I'm not just thought a restaurant is an example, but if people want something like quieter, you know, or, you know, if there's, I'm sure we can kind of think about that.
Um, and we had, I mean, we did just pass the artisan industry as well, and so I think it couples well with that just of sort of thinking, uh, if we have folks creating things in their garage to think of ways that that could be a small storefront. I'd also just like to note that, uh, when we were, when, uh, Jared, speaking of the zoning work, uh, looking at the mixed use neighborhood zoning, also art, uh, one of the Dickinson students, Monsay, is it Monsay? Had worked very hard to look at, uh, when when it was described as, uh, some of these things have to go to the zoning hearing board and instead of it just being our staff being able to approve something in a permit. So she had done a really great analysis that helped us see where these are happening more than others and how often and for what types. And she went through papers, not just digital, she actually highlighted everything. So, um, some of that is also things, so there's a lot of extra things that we take into consideration when we're looking at all of this and, um, we really appreciate that the extra eyes and insight that we get when we get to have some interns.
I just want to say I'm I'm glad that you're looking at the the mixed use in neighborhoods. Uh, I'm somebody that does remember those corner stores. This is my neighborhood, it's where I grew up and right here next door was a corner store that Jeff remembers, it's his neighborhood too. You could walk to and get your milk and your bread if you forgot it at the grocery store. Um, but if you take a look at some of the old maps of town in the historical society, just the thriving, um, variety of retail that used to be out in these neighborhoods. There was an, and Jeff, he'll remember this too, a legendary candy store two blocks away from here tucked back in an alley. But yes, you guys remember it. So you know, so just one by one, as we have grown older, those things have disappeared. Um, and it is kind of sad to see, so I I like that we're looking at possibilities for maybe bringing some of those things back, so thanks.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so second item on my agenda for tonight is an action item that Borough Council may approve a time extension request by Jonathan Jupay of Northside Village LLC, the contract purchaser of Lot Seven within the I E C subdivision for considering and taking action on the final land development plan for Lot Seven as per section two two six dash two one dot A two dot two of the Borough subdivision and land development ordinance. The new deadline shall be December ninth, twenty twenty-five.
We have a a motion to extend the request, a time extension for Northside Village and I will second that motion. Are there any questions or comments from council? Okay, I will call the question, uh, all those in favor, please say aye. And opposed and the motion passes. So for new business tonight, um, I did want to announce that we did have an executive session yesterday. Susan, how do I describe what that was on? I don't, I don't usually make this announcement, so I want to make sure that I say it correctly.
Sure. I think with this particular one, you you could fit it under potential litigation.
Okay, that sounds good. And so that was just the announcement of an executive session. Additional on new business, um, I thought I'd just bring up, uh, what would be coming for next week. I see some friends here that have been, um, uh, brought forward an ordinance, um, that we have been working on with our, um, staff and council, labor council on a welcoming ordinance. So we have gone through that and had some options that would be presented next week and but that it's not, we we still are not in a a formal, like, uh, we're we're still discussing it basically. So next week will be more of a public discussion of how we, um, would probably choose to approach it, there's a couple of different avenues. They all have much of the same information in them, but there's different ways to formally move forward adoption. Is there anything that we would give out in advance or no? Okay, um, so we can, um, then when we have the council meeting, probably read what's available. Because some of the, some of it is not actually available to us yet, so I I can't actually share anything anyway. But it will be a public discussion, um, on our council meeting next Thursday at six PM. So those who have patiently waited, uh, please feel free to attend and, um, listen and weigh in. Is there anything else that I'm missing on that? Yes. No, go ahead.
Not on that, but I also wanted to share, because I know there's some people who are in attendance who might be interested, that also on the agenda for next Thursday's meeting, um, is the proposed traffic calming along Bedford and East Street. Um, so that would also be next Thursday's. Not to kind of, you know, not to jump there, but I just wanted to make sure to share that as well, because that's been an ongoing discussion.
Is there anything else, Susan, that would be of importance to to note for next week soon to come?
I think those are the two highlighted items that I would draw attention to as well as, um, hope that everyone comes out and sees our and helps council recognize a number of our fire personnel who are being recognized for a number of achievements throughout this past year, so we'll we'll have that at the beginning of the meeting.
And I'll also just note that we have a a recent graduate from Dickinson who will be presenting her research on sidewalks and pedestrian issues possibly on the in the downtown. So I'm not even aware of everything that she's going to present, so I'm excited about that. If there's no other new business, uh, there is another opportunity for public comment for anyone that wants to speak. And if you could just give your name and address and we have five minutes for each speaker, thank you.
Five minutes, I'm not going to take five minutes, but my name is Tina Ziegler and I live at one twenty East Louden Street. I just wanted to say thank you to council for providing an update. I think something as like a citizen, I think it's hard sometimes to come to these meetings and just have one-way communication. And so I really appreciate it when council has taken the time to discuss things that aren't necessarily on the agenda and to go further into detail about things that are on the agenda. I know Councilman Stewie has done that, um, last week, uh, Mayor Schultz kind of went in-depth with the gentleman's concerns about two-way traffic calming. And so when we have these kinds of more robust conversations, I think it does our whole community a service. And so thank you for the update.
Anyone else? And again, name and address.
Don Smith, three fifty-eight street. Uh, I want to talk about the calming measures. I oppose them. Speeding is a problem throughout the community, not just on those two streets. It is dysfunctional, the layout, the design of a one-way street with two lanes with the passing stripe, that's your speeding problem. So I was at a Pats Hairsburg area transportation study meeting a couple of years ago at the community center. And I heard someone say that concrete is very expensive to remove. And I'm thinking, well, why is it then that we did that to B Street? I mean, we're talking about rezoning some of our neighborhoods and making them accessible for people to use, small businesses. And so I think my plan for the calming measures of making those one-way streets into two-way and the taking out the traffic lights and putting four-way stops addresses all the problems and is more conducive to what we're used to. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about the growth of the county. We are in the center of the valley, we are a county seat. East Street and Bedford Street want parallel, you know, with Hanover Street, we need those lanes. What happens if there is a catastrophic event? It almost happened in nineteen seventy-nine to Three Mile Island, it was almost an exodus of people had to leave their homes. I was working at Sykeside, some people left that area and stayed at the Harbaugh Motel. But, you know, it could be bad. And so we have to think of those things in the future. Uh, thirty years ago, the borough annexed a lot of acreage west of towns where the warehousing is. We cannot impede trucking. You know, putting these concrete barriers in the center of our streets is not helping us. And, um, so I just think you need to reconsider. We have a lot of growth ahead of us and taking those lanes away is not helping us. Now, I I see a lot of us on two wheels now. Now, I'm just, I'm a pedalist, but there's a lot of battery-operated vehicles out there. People of all ages and fast. So, you know, we're growing and transportation modes are changing. It's it's easier to get a people on two wheels now because they don't have to pedal or they can just throttle. So, you know, we have a lot of things to look for, but, you know, changing those streets and limiting to to, it's going to back up in the traffic. And I just think of, like Jeff Bezos says, if you have an idea, make sure you have a way out, a back door. And if you use this plan of converting one-way streets to two, taking away traffic lights, four-way stops, if it doesn't work, you can always go back and do your new plan. I just want a standard street plan to alleviate these problems and will help us grow. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Hey, everybody, my name is Joan Werner, I live at one fifty-seven South Pitch Street. I just want to say I like the new plan. Besides all of the people who have been hit and all of the homes who have been hit, there are plenty of near misses that never, you know, make their way to you guys. I'm very happy with the change.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone via Zoom, Stephanie? All right, well, if there's nothing else for this evening, I guess this meeting is adjourned, thanks for allowing me to lead this one last time, I guess.